We'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, October 19th, 2023. Please stand and join us in fledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crowell, please call the roll.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
And Chair Schwartz.
Here. Our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Knoblock. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the agenda's adopted. Next, we have approval of the minutes of our September 21st, 2023 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Knoblock.
Chair Schwartz, can I approve that? I was in your last one.
Last month.
Oh, last month, yes.
Then I will, I will second.
Thank you.
All right.
That was better.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Casey. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Abstained.
And the minutes are approved with one abstention, Commissioner Knoblock. First order of business this evening is planning case 23-18, a conditional use permit for McManus Detail at 11670 Eagle Street Northwest, Suite 100. Mr. Crowell.
Good evening, Commissioner. Again, this was presented at the September Planning Commission meeting, and then there were some outstanding questions from the Planning Commission, so you all had postponed action to the October meeting. So I'll just kind of quickly refresh everyone on the case and then just provide a little bit of additional context to some of the questions that you all had. As you mentioned, this is for a conditional use permit at 11670 Eagle Street Northwest in the Coon Rapids Tech Center building. That site is zoned industrial, where auto detailing, under our code, kind of falls under minor auto repair, which is a conditional use, meaning this, the CUP. The applicant has indicated that they provide interior detailing and cleaning services of vehicles, with some rare instances of some exterior shine and wash services in this space. They estimate about two to four vehicles per day and have three employees that are really kind of staggered, again, throughout the day, no more than two employees at one time, and then no more than two vehicles being cleaned at one time. Here was the site plan again, just to show, it's in Suite 100 of the building, and then I highlighted the two parking stalls outside of that suite. It is noted in their lease that they're only allowed to park vehicles on those two exterior stalls that you see highlighted there. And that kind of aligns with the approval of this building, where it was basically kind of approved of two parking stalls for each of the suites on site. Here's just image again of kind of the outside of that suite and those two parking stalls that they'd be allowed to use. Just quickly, on the floor plan again, it's about a 1,500 square foot space. They have a kind of cashier front desk area, and then really just their shelving in the back and the main spaces used to clean the vehicles. Just some images again provided by the applicant, kind of highlighting the variety of tools and cleaning materials that they're using in the space. Again, it's really kind of vacuuming out vehicles, kind of washing carpets in the vehicle, kind of washing seats, wiping off dashboards, those types of things. And then potentially some wheel shine, and again, some exterior wash in a few cases. So there was a couple of questions related to kind of operation and circulation for the business, as well as kind of understanding the overall use for the Coon Rapids Tech Center building. We didn't have a representative from the application there at the last meeting, and so you all had kind of wanted to postpone action for the next month. We do have a representative from the business and the property owner in the meeting as well that can answer any questions. I'll just, on a staff side, kind of highlight some additional context. So for the circulation and operation, again, folks aren't typically waiting onsite and are coordinating a ride when they're dropping off their vehicle. The cleaning can take up to four hours, so people just aren't typically waiting there. They're either kind of carpoolsing with someone that's driving them offsite, or they're getting an Uber or something, and then coming back to pick up their vehicle. And the rare occurrence that someone is waiting onsite and would need to use a restroom facility, which was something that was kind of brought up from the commission, there is a shared restroom facility onsite that does meet the minimum building code standard, so someone can use that shared facility, and it is code compliant to do that. And then each of those suites in the Coon Rapids Tech Center are set up where they can build their own restroom in each of those suites as well. So it's just something like we would keep an eye on as staff, as other tenant spaces would be leased in the space, that if it kind of works for them, that they could provide a separate restroom in that suite. Otherwise, kind of the shared facility is also allowed kind of for that building. And then, as was mentioned earlier, to meet the minimum parking, they can have three to four vehicles kind of inside the suite, and then are utilizing those two spaces on the outside. It's written in their lease that they're not allowed to park vehicles outside of those two spaces on the stall to keep kind of cleanliness on the site and not encourage a lot of exterior And then looking at kind of future use of the Coon Rapids Tech Center, I'll just highlight that the conditional use permit that we're approving, or is up for consideration, is really geared towards auto detailing. So in our code, it does fall under minor auto repair, but they're not really doing any auto repair in the site. So we just wanted to try to make that more clear in the conditional use permit, that this is for auto detailing services only, and that if there were any other minor auto repair services that could lead to part swapping or junk vehicles on the site, you know, we would kind of have the tools to revoke that CUP and are discouraging that use. The property owner did include kind of an updated narrative for the application, and did indicate there were a number of major and minor auto repair uses that were interested in the tech center, and they did turn them away because they're not trying to encourage a lot of outdoor storage or heavy auto uses in the building. And then, kind of from a staff perspective on what we see for the building, I mean, we really have to follow kind of what our zoning code dictates as permitted or conditional uses. We find that auto repair is compatible with the industrial zoning district with a CUP and with some added conditions. And here again, auto detailing is a less intense use of minor auto repair. So we felt it was compatible with the building and with the industrial zoning district. So the staff recommendation here is to approve the proposed conditional use permit with the following conditions that you see on the screen. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and again, we do have the business owner and the property owner here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Crowell?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Crowell, so condition one there states that it is for Suite 100 only, so the CUP is limited to Suite 100, so if we had another, say, detailing business come in for another suite, they would see another CUP for this property?
That is correct, yep. So we would kind of treat each one of the suites separately. So if another use that was a conditional use was looking at another suite in that facility, they would need to come through the conditional use permit process with the commission for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, Commissioner, at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Casey.
So, Mr. Crowell, would it have been advisable for them to just post a sign in their suite that says, "Public restrooms are not available," or something like that, or is that even necessary?
Yeah, I guess I don't know if that's necessary, just kind of talking with our building official. It is compliant to have just that one restroom, kind of for customers or for the users in those suites, to just have that one facility.
And is that on the far end of the building?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, so at the end here, there's the shared restroom facility, and then I believe like a small kind of maintenance closet for some mechanical equipment.
Okay, so it's essentially a half bath, sink and a toilet?
Yeah, like a sink and a, yeah, toilet, yep.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Heikala.
Not to dwell on bathrooms or anything, but is the bathroom then locked? I mean, so the person in the detailing place, they would have to get a key there and go down and?
Yeah, if I recall, it has a passcode, but maybe the, okay, they're nodding, so yes. So yeah, there's just a, like a pin on the door that you would just enter.
Yeah, I drove through there the other day, and I saw somebody down there, looked like doing some maintenance or whatever, and so I figured they must have access.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions for the commissioner? Is there anything the petitioner or property owner would like to add? If so, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
I'm the real estate manager for Larry Companies. Do you want the Larry Companies address?
If that'd be fine.
8345 Crystalview Road, Eden Prairie, 55344.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that we spent a good deal of money on this building, we're pretty proud of it, and we have no intention of having any kind of use that would deter from that. And so, in accepting a lease from these folks, this is such a clean use that we felt really comfortable with it. And we would not put another detailing use in there because we just don't do that. So this would be the only detailing use. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Maintenance of the restroom facility, since it's a shared one, is it every property owner, every suite user has to keep it up, or do you have?
We have a maintenance man that is responsible for that, and he visits the property once a week.
Perfect.
And so he cleans it, refills the supplies, that kind of thing.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Schmalki first.
So one question, so you mentioned that you wouldn't have another detailing company, but do you foresee having more businesses where there is an expectation that customers would be frequenting their spot, et cetera, so?
I don't think so. We're working really hard right now on a lease for the northmost unit, Suite 108, and that use is a company that is training folks in machining stuff, and they are actually going to put in their own restroom. So there's also that possibility for any of the remaining spaces, that they just don't want to use the shared restroom, which is the case with this tenant that we're working with right now.
So I'm less on the restroom at this moment, I'm more concerned about like the parking and traffic.
No. We, in every single lease, they would not be allowed to have more than a couple cars. That's in every lease.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I just wanted to say that I think it's a fantastic-looking building. It's a small business and encouraging more small businesses in there, and I personally am happy that you're there.
Thank you.
And the only thing, you know, last time we had the discussion about the restrooms and a few other things, and from your, what you have submitted and stuff, to me, anyway, is satisfactory.
Awesome. We have a number of these around the Twin Cities, and we're really, really interested in promoting small business. That's a really big part of, we're actually a really small company, believe it or not. And that's at the heart of the owner's ideas, to have, to help people get from their garage to a small facility like this. We're really, really interested in that kind of tenant.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I have a question for the applicant. Could you elaborate a little bit further to give us all an insight further to potentially other businesses that you're looking to potentially put into these suites? And maybe if you could explain the Coon Rapids Tech Center, the name, is that an effort to target certain small businesses, or?
Not necessarily, to be really frank. So we have some of these in Waconia, and we call them Waconia Tech Centers. And so, and we're building one in Chaska right now, we're calling that the Chaska Tech Center. It's just what we've decided to do. There's really no meaning to it. I talked to a gentleman today that has a small framing business, we'd be really interested in that, but he wanted a lot smaller space, so I don't know that we're going to be able to make that work, any of those kind of uses. Any kind of small business distribution, anything like that, would be okay with us.
Okay, thank you.
I noticed when I drove by, there was no trash enclosure. What is the facility's setup or procedure for trash?
So if you look at the, which would be on the right-hand side, there is a trash enclosure. It's trash enclosure, bathroom, and then the utility room. So the trash enclosure has an overhead door. That's probably why you don't know that it's there.
Okay.
When?
Commissioner Casey.
When you say overhead door, is that implying that they drop bags in from the?
No, 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 the door comes up and goes down like that.
Okay.
So you can't tell that it's the trash room.
Okay. An incognito door, sort of?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for this petitioner? All right, thank you, we may have more later.
Thank you.
Does the business itself wish to say anything?
My address is 2508 118th Lane Northwest, right here in Coon Rapids. The reason we chose this location was just because Tanner and I both live in Coon Rapids, we're a solid facility, it's beautiful, we're proud of our business, we've lived in Coon Rapids our entire life, and it's just encouraging him to start a small business, my son, and you know, we got an image to uphold, we're detailing, so that means clean, so we got an image to uphold, there's not going to be, you know, we don't do car parts, but there's not going to be anything outside the building, everything happens inside the building, it'd always be maintained clean. We got a, you know, we got an image to uphold, and also we know that all eyes are on us, so that's all I got to say. Any questions for me?
Commissioner? All right, none at this time, thank you. All right, Commissioner, your thoughts? Commissioner Casey.
From last month, this little Q and A has answered a lot of my questions and the narrative presented, and so I'm feeling okay about it. I think it is an attractive idea, appealing to small businesses, and a good fit for community.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
I'll support it as well, as long as, I guess, we're just careful that, to the property owners, right? It's like, my big concern is that is around underestimating the amount of space that's going to be needed to accommodate the traffic, other vehicles coming, you know, coming in, and would people start to then encroach on the other units, et cetera, which I trust is what you guys would manage, right? I feel like it's a little bit of an experiment to kind of see if this is a good fit, you know, type of business for it. I've read your updated narrative and do appreciate the examples of businesses that you turned away, so I feel like you take it seriously. So I would be in support of this.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Heikala.
Having heard what the other commissioners say in planning case 23-18, I move that the planning commission approves the proposed conditional use permit with the following four stated conditions.
Second.
I'll third it.
Motion by Heikala, second by Geisler, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And the motion carries, this is a decision by the planning commission, and can be appealed to the city council within 10 business days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, continued, good luck. All right, our next case is planning case 23-20, a subdivision exception for Freddie Alvarado at 101088th Avenue Northwest. Mr. Patzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. First, I just want to introduce myself real quick, my name's Max Patzner, I'm the new city planner for the city, I've been working with Dakota, and I'll be here occasionally to present items before the planning commission. So moving forward, the item I have before you here today is a subdivision exception for Freddie Alvarado, 101088th Avenue Northwest. So I have here a location map showing the location of the property in Pleasure Creek, Coleman Acres, Platteau, in the south part of the city, and then another location map showing the applicant's property as well as the adjacent parcel. And it isn't showing up quite right here on the screen, but the applicant's parcel should be highlighted in red there, and the adjacent parcel is the one highlighted in yellow. So that left arrow is pointing to the applicant parcel. And what the applicant is proposing is a subdivision exception to move the lot line from the rear of the property to transfer about a 2,030 square foot notch from the adjacent property to the subject property. And so that would be reducing the adjacent property from about 22,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet, and increasing the size of the subject property from about 14,000 to about 16,000 square feet. So here with the lot survey, I have parcel A on the left, parcel B on the right, that's the applicant's parcel and the adjacent parcel, and then parcel C on the southwest side is the notch that's going to be moved to the applicant's parcel from the adjacent parcel. So a couple items, there aren't any existing drainage and utility easements in this section of the subdivision, so staff did not see the need to dedicate any new drainage and utility easements as part of this. There also is no need to vacate any existing drainage and utility easements. No nonconformities with regard to lot size or lot shape are going to be created, both lots will continue to meet all of the size, shape, ratio requirements. There is one nonconformity that will be created by this change, and there's about 120 square foot shed on the adjacent parcel, that with the moved lot line would no longer meet the 10-foot side yard setback, it would be about 4.8 feet from the new side lot line. So in order to address this, staff is proposing a condition of approval that in order to approve any new building permit for an accessory structure in that parcel C, the owner would need to move the shed such that it is no longer encroaching on that lot line setback or remove the shed entirely. And speaking to the applicant, the applicant has indicated that they plan to build an accessory structure on that lot C, that's the purpose of purchasing it, so that's the proposal for making sure that that shed is moved once it's in possession of the applicant. So here's the shed with a circle in red around it showing the 4.8-foot setback from the new side lot line. And that's basically it. City staff do recommend the planning commission approve the proposed subdivision exception with the condition of approval that I noted earlier. And I do want to note that, and this may be my oversight in terms of where this was placed on the agenda, but this is a public hearing, so a public hearing will be required for this, and I do believe the applicant is here in the audience today, so the applicant will be able to answer any questions as well. And with that, I will open it up for any questions or discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Patzner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Patzner, so the shed as it exists, if the applicant did nothing with it, it's legally nonconforming and it's acceptable as is, but if they want to make a change, they will then have to bring it into conformity?
The, correct, that's correct. So if they wanted to make a change, they would need to bring it into conformity, and essentially would probably need to move or remove the shed anyway due to the space limitations, but we're just adding that into the requirements as well.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions for the commission? Anything the petitioner would like to add? No? All right, we do need a public hearing in this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 23-20, a subdivision exception for Freddie Alvarado at 101088th Avenue Northwest. Anyone wish to speak to the public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
In planning case 23-20, I move that the planning commission approve the proposed subdivision exception with the listed condition on our packet.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And this motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 business days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, good luck. All right, our next case. Planning case 23-21, a conditional use permit for United Rentals at 11365 Exion Street Northwest. Mr. Crowell.
All right, so yeah, our final item tonight is the applicant's requesting approval of a conditional use permit for a new sale and rental business of special mobile equipment and storage containers. So this building would utilize the existing building and open storage area on the site. This site is zoned industrial, again, would need the conditional use permit, and then they would use the existing building for their office space, some equipment, rental storage, and some minor kind of cleaning and maintenance for their equipment. So this is just a zoomed-in kind of aerial to show you the existing use, or kind of the previous tenants in the space were Atlas Van Lines Moving Company and Ace Moving and Warehousing, so they had a number of kind of semi-trailer and storage container, storage on the site already. A lot of the adjacent uses here also have a lot of semi-trailer and container storage in this area, so this is kind of what the intended use of this industrial area has kind of been. It's a three-point, three-and-a-half acre site, that existing building is about 14,469 square feet, there's a front parking lot for employees and customers, and then again, this existing open storage area behind the building. So there's currently chain link fence around the entire open storage area on the site as well. So no major interior improvements are proposed, they're not expanding the footprint of the building or expanding the footprint of the open storage area, really just utilizing what's existing on the site. I just pulled this from United Rentals website, so they provide equipment and storage container rentals, they're a Fortune 500 company, their typical customer base is, you know, a mix of construction and industrial companies, utilities, municipalities, government agencies, and kind of other uses like that. So all the equipment that would be stored on this facility or the shipping containers are all empty, you know, someone You know, someone is then renting them, they're being carried off-site to be used for what they need to be used for, and then they're being returned back here, so it's really kind of storage of rental equipment. They have indicated that at the Coon Rapids facility, they would primarily include trucks, trailers, pickup trucks, forklifts, and then those storage containers available for rent. So, these were some photos provided by the applicant to kind of show you some of the idea of the larger equipment that would be stored behind the building, and then the storage containers, which they're proposing to stack three-high. This image shows five-high, so it wouldn't be quite as tall, but they are proposing kind of three-high back there. This was a site plan just provided by the applicant. Again, kind of show right behind the building was where a lot of that kind of semi and truck, what they kind of call their, their rolling stock, would be parked, and then kind of the back two-thirds would be utilized for container storage. They estimate that they'll need about five parking spots for employees, the rest would be available for customers. They're utilizing the existing entrance and exit and kind of the main circulation of the, of the site. This was a floor plan provided by the applicant. Again, no kind of changes to the layout or major interior improvements here. They're really using it for offices for their, for United Rentals, and then in the larger kind of open area, they may be doing some, storage of some of their smaller rental equipment would be stored in here. They've indicated maybe some minor kind of maintenance, so, you know, maybe like sweeping out the storage containers, you know, kind of any little minor repairs they might need, and then bringing them back out to rent on the floor. So, the main items I just wanted to highlight from the conditional use permit criteria. The first, just kind of related to the screening of the open storage area. So, in our industrial districts, we do allow open storage areas in the rear of the building, and then we're just ensuring that they're appropriately screened kind of from adjacent properties. I did highlight a condition there that, that the applicant could work with planning staff to just maybe provide some additional screening from Xeon Street. Staff, we felt pretty comfortable that the, the building itself on the site does a lot of the screening for that back area. There are a lot of taller trees, and it's a little kind of heavier, vegetated along the, the railroad that we felt provides sufficient screening, but really kind of looking at, could we provide some additional screening from the views of someone kind of along Xeon Street here to, that can kind of see to the back of the site? And then, the other, just ensuring that the, the applicant would be working with our Building Inspections Division to kind of talk through the project to determine if any building permits would be needed, and just ensuring they go kind of through the final inspection and get that certificate of occupancy on the site. So, I'm here if you have any questions. I believe we have a representative of the application here if you have questions. Otherwise, our staff recommendation would be to approve the conditional use permit with a, a couple of the conditions highlighted here.
Thank you. Commissioner Kroll, any questions for Mr. Kroll at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Kroll, I have two questions for you. One, in conditional use standard E, there you list that the site has barbed wire. We've previously requested that it get removed with other CUPs in the city. Is that a condition that we should add or consider here?
Yeah, it could be something if you all wanted to consider that. Yeah, we have done that in the past. Otherwise, we've kind of just treated it on a case-by-case basis and kind of treated it that it's a legal, nonconforming use, so if they're not really touching the fence, which in this case they wouldn't be, you know, we've kind of just allowed that to, to be there. If they were going to build any new fence or, or something on, on site, we wouldn't allow barbed wire there. So, I guess staff doesn't necessarily have a preference either way, but if it's something you all want to consider, we could do that.
I guess in, in consideration, you know, the other property where we had this conversation was 3050, which was a more customer-facing business versus this a more industrial use? Is that part of the consideration?
Yeah, I would say so, and then the fact that this is kind of more in the rear yard of the building, and that's how we kind of guided in, in the zoning with 3052, a lot of their storages kind of all around the building, and they're not necessarily in a rear yard. So, I think that kind of played into some of the consideration at 3050 as well.
Okay. The other question I had is, it looked, it looked like on your aerial, half the yard is an improved surface, or a third or so, and the other half of it is unimproved. Is there any concern about storage on an unimproved surface within the city?
No, as long as, again, it's kind of in the rear yard and screened, and it's on an approved plan, we can allow kind of the outdoor storage there. I know just north of this site, we had worked with KMN Tire on their building permits, and they were looking at kind of expanding their open storage area, and I know there are some restrictions on the utility easement that's kind of on the east of that site and along the railroad. So, I know that actually prohibited them from being able to kind of pave or expand an area, so I, I kind of feel like that might also be at play on this site. So, it wasn't something we were too concerned about or asking to require.
Okay, so staff isn't concerned about storage containers being stored on an unimproved surface?
Yeah, correct. It's in the, because it's in the rear yard in a designated open storage area. That was kind of what we were considering.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
Mr. Kroll, do the adjacent businesses also have barbed wire fencing?
I don't recall offhand. I, I would assume one of, someone does over there. I think at the KMN Tire site on some of that existing fence before they moved in had some barbed wire that we just kind of left, but then they had built some new fencing that we wouldn't allow the barbed wire.
And, and is there a benefit or reason for having the barbed wire for safety of, I guess, I'll just go to kids, like if they're happened upon the property, does that actually help to, for this type of a business to ensure that they can't get hurt or something along those lines, I guess?
Yeah, I guess I don't know if there's a ton of concern there. I guess the reason why a lot of the businesses want to put it is for security of their equipment and just making sure people aren't sneaking in and kind of stealing equipment. So, it is a security measure that they find valuable or want to use on their site, but, you know, we're just currently in our code for any kind of new fence, just don't allow.
Perfect, and, and that, that would be reasonable. That's why I was asking the question, so, thank you.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks.
Chair Schwartz. Commissioner Knoblock.
I have a question for Dakota. Could you clarify for me, as we're talking about barbed wire, does the city have a clear standard, like is barbed wire considered a hazard or is it considered a security feature for property owners? Same thing like guard dogs, security, electric fence?
Sure. Yeah, I guess I would say from our, the code, it's not quite clear to me maybe why we just kind of have a general statement to say it's not allowed. In, in some ways, I feel like it's probably more geared towards residential property from a, a safety or aesthetic reason as to, you know, you don't want someone's house just to be surrounded by a bunch of barbed wire. You know, we kind of see this in a lot of our industrial areas or around kind of utility structures that they have security concerns, and that's just kind of been some of the standard that they use on fencing. So, I guess I don't know if that addresses your question, but...
Yeah, thank you. That clarifies, you know, the commercial versus residential, because I don't intend to put barbed wire on my property.
Yeah.
No, that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Is there anything the petitioner would like to add? Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Roger Pettit, 29119 113th Street, Princeton, Minnesota. So, I currently work for United Rentals. We're currently running these containers out of Way Park, Minnesota. When we move, the intent is to move to Coon Rapids, our capabilities currently are only to stack two-high. The three-high would be a future capability that we'd like, but current, our current capacity is to stack containers two-high. And then, if you guys have any other further questions about the business, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Just to clarify, so these containers that are too high, are they, they have equipment in them, they're stor, they're full?
They, they're empty. They're empty storage containers, so...
To be rented out?
To be rented, yep. Yep, so we rent them to construction sites or really wherever people need them. They need to store stuff at their house.
And then they stay at the rentals, renters' property, right?
Correct.
Until it's emptied and then you bring it back?
Correct, yep. We do not transport any product in the containers.
You don't store it on your site?
We don't, no. There would be no stored product besides containers.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Your comment that you only intend to stack two-high, but at some point you might stack three-high?
Yeah, so they would like the conditional use permit to allow us to stack three-high. Our capabilities currently are only to stack two-high. Our, our equipment that we currently have in the state will only allow us to stack two-high, so, and we don't intend on changing that within the next two or three years, but at some point they'd like to as we grow.
Okay, because I see in condition four from the planning staff, your last comment is only stacking containers too-high. Do you intend to allow the three-high, or what is staff's position?
Yeah, I, we kind of intentionally left it a little broad to just allow maybe some flexibility or discussion with the applicant. I, I would say if they're going to stack three-high, particularly on the, the south end of the site, we would want to see some additional landscaping, just to help screen it from Xeon Street. I think we kind of added, maybe if they only went two-high, you know, maybe they don't need to provide some additional screening, so we kind of left it open to some different options. But if the commission has thoughts and wants to be more specific on how to guide staff, we can certainly revise that. We just kind of meant to leave it intentionally broad to kind of work with the applicant on, on some solutions.
Okay, I guess I'm a little confused if their intent is to eventually stack three-high, but our conditional use permit only allows stacking two-high with wording to that effect, we would have to change the, the permit?
I, I guess I don't know if Blair has a different interpretation. I, how I interpret, like in the intent of the, that was just to say maybe one solution was to only stack them too-high. If they would like to stack three-high, I think we would just then work with them to provide some additional screening, but I guess I, I don't think the CUP dictates really the height of it. It's more to just say the CUP is really for the use to allow kind of the rental equipment use.
Mr. Schmuckel.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this is really about condition E of a conditional use permit. As you can see, Mr. Kroll highlighted in his report to you that it's okay with the condition. This is about, this is, this is exactly why you're here. It's a determination you make about general unsightliness or sort of how it affects nearby properties, what you think is acceptable, two-high, three-high, one-high, no-high. That, that's really the main finding about your discussion this evening is what is generally unsightly and what isn't.
No-high would eliminate the containers altogether.
Well, and this is the point of the body, right? That's the discussion. I think that's probably why the applicant brought it up.
Chair Schwartz. Commissioner Knoblock.
Can I propose for option four to change the wording from stacking containers to I to three-high? It is a commercial, and the reasoning for this suggestion is it is a commercial area. There's SAV Transportation Company just south, I believe. Across the street, there's TNT Holland, if they're still up, yeah. And there's a, a few other companies around there in the transportation realm of the market and industry. I, I think it's a commercial district. Three-high should not be that unsightly, and I think it would alleviate, alleviate future issues of having to change, change the permit.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
To the applicant first. Containers are roughly eight, nine feet tall per stack.
So, the tallest containers we carry are nine foot six.
Okay.
A standard height container is eight foot six, so there's a height of a foot difference between the tallest and the shortest. So, as you're stacking, obviously, the math works out to, you know, 18, 19 feet for two, and then obviously 27, 28 for three, so...
Thank you. To staff's point there, I, I think Dakota, are you leaning a little heavier on the and/or in that sentence of if additional screening was provided, would you felt, would you feel that limiting the container stacking at all would be required?
Yeah, I think that is kind of to your, to your question and kind of Commissioner Knoblock's suggestion. Yeah, if the commission felt they were comfortable with three-high, I would just kind of strike that from item four and just really allow us to provide some additional screening. I, I think staff was comfortable with the three-high. We would just want to maybe see some additional landscaping of some sort to just help kind of screen that from Xeon Street.
Mr. Kroll, maybe rephrase my question. Is, is there anything limiting how high containers can be stacked in the city, period, right now? Or is, I mean, if, if they provide additional screening that is sufficient, can they stack as high as, as OSHA allows or whatever?
Sure. Yeah, I would say, so in our, our code, you know, we say for the open storage areas that they should be screened from adjacent properties or from public streets. So, I, I would think going four-high would become taller than the building and wouldn't be allowed. I, I think three is the, the maximum they could do. It's about as tall as the building on the site is. There is some heavier vegetation kind of to the back, so if they wanted to go higher than three, it feels like it wouldn't be allowed by code, or we have things for code enforcement to ensure that it's no taller than three containers.
So, if this was readjusted to say, and shall provide adequate screening to, for, to cover the use of the open yard, that way if it's only two-high, it's shorter, and if it's three-high, it's got to be taller? Or, you know, and, and, I mean, I, I get, I get where you're going at here, but I think what we, what we're concerned about here is we put a number on here, and it could unduly limit when they have opportunities to potentially mitigate that problem, and we want to leave them latitude to mitigate it if they want to do additional stacking in the yard. I, I agree with you, it shouldn't go 10-high or whatever. I mean, there's, there's practical limitations, too.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
So, I guess the other ambiguity I'm, I'm seeing is I'm, I'm really not clear on what staff is envisioning as the necessary additional screening. It just, we talk about adequate screening and so forth, but as I'm looking at this, I'm, you know, you can see the more, the trees on the one side where it's really bare on trees on the other side, so where do you, and, and there are trees in the front, like what would it mean to the applicant if we said that, you know, they, they did start stacking three for their benefit, for, for us, too, in terms of what we're looking at? What does adequate mean, and where do you see as some potential deficiencies to give us an idea?
Yeah, so some, some examples we did share with United Rentals kind of through this process, maybe I should go up here so I can point it out. You know, I think one, one of the things that... You know, I think one, one of the things that we discussed with United Rentals was, um, potentially there's a kind of existing fence and gate here, um, with a small kind of landscape island. Maybe there's an opportunity to extend that island down for some screening. Or another option we kind of gave them was they could build kind of a new landscape island kind of here, um, that would, essentially where they're kind of showing where they wanna put the containers, they could build like a new landscape island and put some taller trees there to kind of help cover right up at there. So, you know, again, we kind of left it open to kind of, you know, what maybe makes sense for United Rentals or wanted to offer some flexibility. Um, but we, we just felt maybe if they were three highs, some additional screening from Zeon Street felt appropriate.
Okay, and the applicant understands that and they're comfortable with it?
Yeah, we've had internal discussions about that, um, issue or what has been brought up. And the additional curbing along that gate, we've internally discussed, and that would be our least favorable option as far as building a peninsula of, of a new landscape island, if you will, and putting larger trees there, evergreens, whatever it is to, to shield. That would be a more favorable outcome for us. Um, only because with obviously truck traffic that we're gonna have to go in and out of this yard. If we start adding curb or we add more obstacles to get around, it just adds another layer of safety, right? So the peninsula, I would, I would say would be our most favorable to add some sort of screening.
Mr. Kroll, that screening would take care of the vision from the roadway, but it wouldn't do anything for property line to the south, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. Um, I think we-
And you, you did say that it, all, the code also talks about screening to additional adjacent property.
Yeah, I believe there is some vegetation on that, um, kind of shared property line there on the south. And then they have their, um, fence with, um, barbed wire. I guess because it was, um, similar to the site on the north, they're already kind of storing similar things. It's in the rear yard. Uh, it kind of is up against a, a railroad track that maybe some of that, kind of what was there felt adequate. It was really just, um, kind of the view from the public street on Zeon.
Chair Schwort.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I have a question for, um, Planner Kroll. Um, instead of going over, I know the, I understand the screening and the purpose and the intent of all that. Um, instead of what I said earlier about going three containers high, is there a reasonable height level that we in the city don't want to exceed? So like three would be, um, twenty-seven, twenty-eight feet. Is there a standard? Cause what, what is the building, thirty, thirty-five feet tall? So my question is, is, is there a general height where exterior non-building items would be considered an issue or flagged or of concern?
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think our code would, um, goes into that level of specificity to say like, storage containers can only be so many high. I think we're, how I would interpret our, our code is if it's taller than the building, we just wouldn't allow that.
Okay.
And so I think that's where essentially three highs the max they could go. And I, I feel comfortable, we have kind of the tools, um, to do code enforcement if it was taller than three.
Excellent. Thanks for that clarification.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmuckey.
I guess I'm, I'm okay with the way number four is currently worded, um, having had that discussion. Because I guess what, what you're saying is, um, you know, limiting it to the containers to too high is an option um, in case the other screening, um, options don't, you know, aren't reasonable for what they need to do. So I'm, I'm clear on number four. I guess I would be okay with just leaving it as is unless for some reason people think that it would, it creates an issue.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I guess I'm looking at this, I'm, I don't know that we need four. From my viewpoint here, a semi-trailer is thirteen and a half feet tall. And frankly, semi-trailers are generally more unsightly than stacked storage containers in neat rows.
True.
Um, so, I mean, two storage containers is a semi-trailer effectively standing in an open yard, which is already there. And that's what the adjacent uses are. So we're not deviating too far from what's already there. And if we're asking them to properly screen a stack of three, which means they have to make something today during implementing that is gonna get to twenty-seven feet tall to properly screen, I, that, that's, that's a long time for a tree to get that tall, or that's a really big wall, or that's a, I, I think it's, we're starting to get to some impractical levels of how do we screen it? And if you take a look at the street view from, from Zeon Street there, there isn't a whole lot of view into this yard. Most of it's blocked by the existing trees that are already there, the building itself or the building to the south. The, and this is also a dead-end street. Um, we're not seeing, it's industrial traffic to and from this road. I, I, if this was in, along the, um, Main Street or near Riverdale or for, uh, contrast, you know, by the Vista Property where we asked for screening because of the amount of commercial and visible traffic there, I think that would make more sense. This, this is in a heavy industrial space that has industrial adjacent uses. I guess I don't see how storage containers are detrimental to semi-trailers next door. I'm, I'm struggling to get to that conclusion. Um, y- you know, the, this is one of the few spots where I think an industrial use, looking industrial makes a lot of sense.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I agree with Commissioner Geisler. I don't have a struggle at all to get to that point. I drove through there today and one other day and you see trailer after trailer after trailer and, uh, didn't look, uh, well, unsightly or whatever. It, it serves the purpose and, and again, there's very little traffic going through there. I don't have an issue with it.
My, my only thought is I believe we need something somewhere in here that's gonna limit it to three. Because I mean, you take a look at that picture that you have there of showing five high, I don't ever wanna see five high. And I guess unless there's something in this use permit that limits it to a maximum of three, I'm afraid that at some point that's something that we could see.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Would, if we were limited to the stack to, not, not to exceed the height of the principal structure and just remove the two or three conversation, we don't know the size of containers in the future. I, I, I think if we just limit it to the height of the principal, principal structure, does that meet what you're seeking?
I would be happy with that.
Mr. Buchicconi.
Today's principal structure, not the principal structure in five years or, get what I'm saying?
I would say the structure as it currently exists.
Yeah, I guess with, um, condition four, if that's something, it sounds like maybe the commission is interested in. I would, maybe my suggestion would be to just, on condition four, strike the sentence about, the second sentence that starts with screening and maybe just add a sentence there, um, either just explicitly saying they can only be three high or no taller than the existing building on the site. I think then it just ties it back to that condition. You know, we're talking about, um, just a properly screened open storage area that's not unsightly from surrounding.
Mr. Chair.
Chair Schwort, sorry. Go ahead, Mary.
Commissioner Schmuckey first.
I guess the one thing to that comment though is in the first sentence on number four, um, it does state the open storage area must be properly screened to further reduce general. Like to me, that says you're expecting some additional screening to be taking place as a part of this condition. So that's, I think, where I'm getting hung up is to the points, you know, already too with all the, with the limited, limitation what you actually see into the yard as it is, um, that's where I'm getting hung up is how necessary is that additional screening? Is it something that staff is trying to improve based on the site due to something we're maybe not aware of? I'm, you know, I, I don't think that that's the case. I think it's just a matter of wording, but I, I don't wanna limit you if you're trying to accomplish something either.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Um, I think that the point of this is general unsightliness and there's neighbors here. And we've talked about Exion and north and south, and there's also, uh, Ballfields to the east as well. So I think the main concern is that the screening be maintained and for all the neighbors. And so, um, that's our concern with general unsightliness with this property moving forward. Cause you never know what that, that other neighbor's gonna be.
I, I really like that. Is there a way that we could rephrase this somehow to speak to the fact that we want it maintained? Um, and/or, or I shouldn't even, I hate that and/or, but, you know, and additional screening, um, you know, it went, if needed, right? Um, somehow kind of incorporate it in there. Again, I don't wanna, um, tie staff's hands to be able to go in and request additional screening changes or to be able to take advantage of limiting the height of the, you know, the containers or whatever they need to be able to help, you know, help accomplish that. But I guess if there, we're not expecting them to, to actually take action to further, you know, to add more screening right now, but we want that as a possibility. I think that's how it needs to be phrased, something along those lines. I'm not very good at that, so.
Chair Schwort.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I have a question for the applicant. Uh, to the best of your knowledge of United Rental uh, in the United States, what would you consider to be the norm in regards to height and stacking of, uh, trailers for rental?
So the mobile storage business unit for United Rentals is only two years old. They bought a company called PacBan two years ago and they had limited locations. And we've expanded by fifty-four locations in the last two years. Um, there's not a standard right now. There's some that stack ten high because they're more in a shipping type environment, right? So shipping yards, they'll stack ten, fifteen high. Um, we're looking in this, especially in the Coon Rapids area because they are on, you know, they're not pretty, they're unsightly. But that being said, we've discussed internally, we are gonna limit ourselves to three high. We're not gonna buy equipment to go higher than that, and that's the intent. So if you wanted to limit it to three high in the verbiage, that'd be fine. But there's not a standard throughout the country to answer your question.
Okay, thank you. That provides good framing information.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So I, I just wanna bring up to the staff's point about screening to the Ballfields. The current screening as it exists is on railroad property. It is not on the subject's property. So we would have to ask them to add screening on their subject property, and there's no way the railroad's doing anything. So I, I, I think we understand that the Ballfields are there. Um, the industrials there too. We put Ballfields next to an industrial park as a city. We made that choice. Um, so there, there's a little bit of that that I think we have to be cautious of because they cannot maintain the screening that along the railroad cause it is not theirs. So we-
Maybe I can add to that too. It's hard to see on this, this image. There are actually overhead wires as well. Um, that kind of right along that, um, property line. So that would also limit, um, some future trees and things there because of those overhead wires. So, um, I guess to further that, that point, like it, it's screening that's kind of off their property that would be difficult to maintain or add on their property there.
And then to, uh, the, the question about the number of stacking, I, I guess I would just look at to say, condition number four should be reworded to a sense that it, you know, appropriate screening be maintained and containers, container stacking not to exceed thirty feet, which is slightly over three tall at, of the nine point six containers. It gives us an objective number. It is not tied to the principal structure. It just, it's just very simple, very straightforward. Um, and that gives us the screening and that would give us the stacking number. That way if containers somehow become nine foot eight inches, they don't have a problem or something like that. We just, that's the number and that's the number.
I totally agree with Commissioner Geisler on that point.
Do I have a recommendation for rewording?
I think we still have a public hearing.
Any other comments? All right, thank you. We may have more for you later.
Thank you.
All right, we do need a public hearing on this matter, so we'll, we'll open a public hearing in planning case. Twenty-three dash twenty-one conditional use permit for United Rentals at one, one, three, six, five, Exion Street Northwest. Anyone wish to speak to public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Limit comments to commission. So Mr. Buchicconi is, do you wanna come up with a reworded number four or you wanna leave that for us to do or?
Well, if the consensus is the, the thirty-foot number and discussing screening, I think Commissioner Geisler rewarded it pretty well.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may propose E, propose language, not a motion.
All right.
Uh, number four would be rewarded to ensure the site is not disturbing to surrounding land uses. The open storage area screening shall be maintained and container stacking shall not exceed a height of thirty feet.
A hundred thirty feet?
Shall not exceed a height of thirty feet.
One million feet.
That works for me. That works for us.
That sounds good.
That sounds reasonable, yeah. Conveys what we wanna say.
So, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Geisler.
In planning case twenty-three dash twenty-one, I move that we approve the proposed conditional use permit with the conditions as listed with a modification, uh, striking the existing number four and adding the condition to ensure the site is not dis- not disturbing to surrounding land uses, the open storage area screening shall be maintained and container stacking shall not exceed a height of thirty feet.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And the motion carries as a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within ten business days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to other business. Mr. Kroll.
Yeah, for our November planning commission meeting, we'll have two site plan reviews. One, um, for a five retail bay, um, kind of strip center, uh, on the corner of Crooked Lake Boulevard and Coon Rapids Boulevard. It's currently kind of an old BP gas station tobacco shop. Um, they're looking to redevelop that site. And then we'll have a, an additional plat and site plan approval for the, uh, suite senior living um, at six hundred Coon Rapids Boulevard, um, kinda on the corner there of Norway and Coon Rapids Boulevard.
You will have a site plan for that?
Yep, yep, there'll be a site plan.
Okay.
And commission, anyone have anything for other business?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Kroll, um, while ago we approved, um, a, a site plan for the planned unit development down off of Hanson there. There's kind of a strip mall across from the Jimmy John's, Caribou, uh, adjacent to the Taco Bell there. Have we seen any building plans or anything like that or is that, that DOA?
Yeah, we as staff, I have not heard of any proposals there of interest on, on that site currently.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Move to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Motion by KC, second by Knoblock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes adjourned.